Alright, wanna call our, um, regular scheduled January council meeting to order. Thank all of our citizens, everybody that's here that came out and watching this online. Um, we'll open up with our prayer pledge. Well, thank you Mr. Woods if you lead us in prayer and we'll follow with the pledge.
I'm from heaven again and thank you now for all of your many blessings. We come together, the master for this meeting tonight. We pray for your Holy Spirit to guide us. Thank you again, the master for everyone that is here. Thank you for America, thank you for the council. And God, we pray for those that's over in California. We pray for those that are less fortunate. God, we just wanna say thank you now for all of your many blessings. This we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, replace the flag with.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We lost power there. Oh, our heaters. Well, I'm blowing the breaker. Uh, you still on Facebook? Alright, we'll keep going then. We lost the recorder down there. So our heaters, the heat in here went out, the heat in the community room and the heat in the conference room is out. So I went to Walmart this morning and bought some heaters. Um, they was working fine, but Mick plugged his computer up and that's why he blew the breaker again. So we, if we get cold, sorry. Yeah, we got about four or five when they're plugged up, so don't tell Lynn and don't tell Eric and it's gonna be bad. So we still good on Facebook, so, uh, alright, we'll start with our roll call.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah.
Mr. Golden.
Here.
Mr. Lyle. Mr. McKinney.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
Mr. Woods.
Alright, we, uh, y'all were gonna let you know y'all go over there and turn that breaker back on.
You got the key?
Got keys and blow.
So Aunt got a key. Okay, um, if you would be, still be praying for, uh, Mr. Lyle and his wife. They got good news. She's, uh, doing better on their way home from the hospital. Uh, so, uh, thank God for that. But still being prayed for, um, and hopefully she'll continue to come on around this way. Um, so first thing, we got, uh, the approval of the minutes from our December council meeting. Is there any corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Ms. Ray, is there a second? Second by Ms. Miller, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, under my report, let you guys know the all, city offices will be closed on the twentieth for MLK Day. Um, also, um, uh, the eighteenth, the, we, we have a Martin Luther King parade. Uh, that committee has been doing that for a while and that parade will start at two o'clock on Saturday. So if anybody would like to attend, they're pretty sure we'd love to have you be a part of that. Um, two o'clock, two o'clock on Saturday. Uh, TML Day on the Hill will be March the third through the fourth in Nashville at the Doubletree. If you would like to attend, get with, um, care about, registration is open now. Um, excuse me, that fills up quick, so if you would please, if you're gonna, if you have intentions of going, please let her know soon. Uh, so we can get the room and everything reserved for Tennessee Municipal League, the Day on the Hill, March third. Um, so I've got, let me give y'all this. I forgot to get this to care about to print this for y'all, so that's why it's cut off, 'cause clearly I don't work the printer well. Hold on, but, uh, important stuff is on there. The sponsors got tore off, the bottom, uh, cut off, so I'll read them, but that, let me borrow that. Okay, so USDA, uh, along, let me pull it up on my phone. You got it? Okay, so, um, Representative Parkinson from Memphis called me and been working on getting this for, uh, a seminar in our community for this. But it's Land Owners and Black Formers Informative Meeting to Discuss Property and Protecting Their Land. Uh, that'll be held here on the twenty-third from five to six thirty. Uh, the sponsors, USDA, um, NRCS, the Natural Resources and Conservation Science. RF, RPF Associates and Black Market Strategies, um, which is Representative Parkinson's, uh, company. But they will have a group here talking to any of the landowners and black farmers about, uh, properties and what they can, uh, benefit from USDA. And that's on the twenty-third. He just sent it to me, that's why I didn't get it in y'all's packet. Um, and if you would like a better looking flyer, I'd get care, care about to email that to y'all. We'll get it on our Facebook page as well, but I just printed that off before I came out here. Alright, um, also, if you see, Sarah, what are cards that, those cards there? You see these little Baltimore Connect cards? If you can remember, we talked about the emergency connection hotline and the tip line and all of that. We have some extra cards. I think I forgot to announce it last month, but we have those extra cards. If you scan that QR code on there, it'll sign you up. But y'all take some of them with you, if you would like to give it out to your constituents. We have a stack of them to hand out to everybody. Um, to get it signed up on our, uh, city's notification hotline, um, that. And I think all of y'all have signed up, but if not, please sign up and encourage everyone to sign up for that. Uh, Ms. Chantel, come on up here and let you, let you introduce yourself to the council here. I got a young lady that's been working with us and I'll tell y'all who she is. And let her tell y'all who she is and what she's doing. So, uh, Ms. Chantel, you have the floor.
Hello, um, Chantel Rucker. I'm a rural fellow for Hardeman and Haywood County, so I'm a part of a new fellowship. Sorry, I'm a part of a new fellowship. I'm in the first round of fellows. Uh, and me and my two colleagues are basically dispersed throughout Tennessee. And there's three of us all together, but we're placed in at-risk and/or distressed counties. And I'm placed in Hardeman and Haywood. And I'll be here for two years and it started in July. And it's a partnership between ECD and Tennessee Tech. And it's no cost to the communities that I'm in. And so I'm basically, to summarize it, I'm a free employee for two years. Uh, if there's anything that I can help with to help build capacity with, anything that I can work on, whether that be like a grant, vows, literally anything that I can work on to help build capacity for two years.
Thank you, Chantel. So she's been working with us and she's here on Mondays and Tuesdays and she's in Brownsville on Wednesdays and Thursdays, I think. Uh, so she's rotating back and forth. She loves Baltimore a lot more than she loves Brownsville. Y'all be sure to tell Mel Ross that. So happy to have her. She a part of the team for another year and a half, two years. So, uh, y'all welcome, Chantel. Um, that's all I have under my report. Also, we got a special guest in the very back row over there. Uh, he got a special gift for y'all. Uh, so after the leave, we got some sweets back there. He made a pie for the council. So before you get your slides, I'm getting mine and then y'all can get the rest, so. No, I would've got mine, but I didn't, I didn't know. So, uh, I was shocked when I walked in. I saw him back, I saw him here, so, uh.
He's trying to sabotage our twenty twenty-five goals. I see.
Yeah, well, I messed that up over the snow break. I've been eating all weekend. That's all, I would probably join you in that. That's all on my report. We'll move to public comments. Is there anybody here that would like to address the council? Alright, move on to standing committees. Under Electric BEA, but on December the thirtieth, uh, they changed their office hours from, changed them to, from seven AM to four thirty Monday through Friday. And seven to three thirty on Fridays. This will start February first. They will be closed for, uh, MLK Day on the twentieth. And they have active on fiber, five, four thousand five hundred and twenty active new customers, uh, with the, uh, fiber. So that's all on Electric. We'll move to Utilities as Mr. Luck.
Good evening, Council Mayor.
Alright, Mike.
Uh, Utility Board met January the eighth and we discussed the, uh, the repairs on the STU valve, the water tank's still in place and the washout on one twenty-five. The weather's helping us up, obviously. And also, we, they approved to replace the computer system at the water plant for our SCADA. We have to, you know, upgrade the, the computer. And, uh, the gas prices kinda went up a little bit to seventy-one cents. That's all I have in the report. Yes, okay.
I almost got you, I almost. Jerry, this your people leave. Next is fire chief prices in training in Nashville, uh, so standing up for him, might as well see.
Yeah.
Evening.
Evening, Council. I'd like to send Lynn's condolences for not being here tonight. He's gone. He's on, uh, he's on business trying to get us some grant stuff going on in Nashville. Um, our report for the month, uh, we had a total of sixty-six calls. Uh, had three structure fires in the county, one vehicle fire in the county. Uh, two brush fires that were in the county, had forty-three EMR calls here in the city. Um, four MVAs in the city, one in the county, four fire alarms in the city, one in the county. And five other calls in the city and two in the county. And the other calls can be any false calls, uh, something overheating, not actually being on fire, that kinda stuff. Uh, we had a total of a hundred and eighty hours of total training for the month, installed twenty-nine smoke alarms. And done twenty-four courtesy inspections. Um, I had four public relations events. And that concludes my report, if y'all ain't got nothing else. Alright.
How's the EMR, uh, calls going?
Fast and furious. Uh, they going. I mean, just, it's new to us and we'll get there.
They, we had one, one call that we was, we'll probably acknowledge them next, uh, month at our council meeting. But they responded to quite a few, uh, assists for EMR and EMS stuff, so hopefully we can, we will continue to grow that.
Yeah.
Part of the fire department where they can do, do more than get all of those guys trained, fire and police and emergency response, the medical side of it.
Good deal.
Alright, thank you, Mr. C.
Alright, thank y'all.
Police, Chief John.
Good afternoon. My report says follows, if I can see it today. We have a total of six hundred nineteen calls for service, two hundred and six citations. Have a total of fifteen accidents, four were injury, eleven property damage. Forty-four arrests, six was juvenile, thirty-eight adults. Special events would be, uh, eighteen different task force sales and, uh, help with the big town, small town, big Christmas. Sixty-seven hours of training and that concludes my report. Any questions?
Chief John, how's the street task force going? And we seen the results that we hope for, is it, is it going good?
Uh, as far as the results, I think we, I know we did a thing in the paperwork, all the guns and stuff we got. We've bagging off a little bit due to the weather, colder months and the snow. But yes, we're having results. We're still keeping stuff down. We solved a couple of incidents that we did have that happened, like shootings and stuff. But that one got resolved. We just hadn't picked everybody up yet.
How many total officers did we have to sign the statutes?
Ten.
And these are sworn in by FBI, right?
Hmm, some are, some are.
That was, uh.
They, they really working, they really working hard.
You making it easy for them. I thought I had the article, uh, it's on, um, on the website. I can't find it, but anyway, they had the numbers in it. I forwarded it to y'all. It was on, it's on our Facebook page and it's also, uh, it's also on, and it went out of the newspaper, but I can't, Sarah sent it to me, but I don't know where it is right now.
We appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. Huh? It's in the last week of paper. Uh, Parks and Rec, Mr. Ford.
Good evening, everyone.
Right, Ford.
Parks and Recreation report on the following. We've completed the breakdown of, of the Christmas lights for the drive-through light show down at Sand Beach. Our youth basketball league, the six, seven, and eight-year-olds and the nine and ten-year-old league. Uh, scheduled to end on the twenty-fifth of this month, but we had to, uh, postpone Saturday's game because of the snow. Uh, the volleyball league, it will, is scheduled in tomorrow, actually. Uh, it's been going great. And lastly, our eleven through fourteen-year-old basketball league youth res, the registration is underway and it will end on the third of February. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. I'll tell, uh, let you guys know, we did meet with, um, A two H as well as YMCA. What, we've been looking through, touring the, uh, armory, uh, them with Parks and Rec, talking to them. Hopefully we'll have some preliminary plans back. I was hoping we would have by today, but sometime this week on that. So next month I have some actual numbers to present to y'all on, on that part of. Alright, uh, streets and sanitation, let's.
Real quick, so I know we're getting non-members on the arm, armory. Are we still getting the plans for the, uh, for the other design in case this falls through? You know, um, the first with ball parks and all that. Is, are they still working on those plans and stuff?
When you say the plans for the first, what do you mean, like?
The forty million dollars.
Several months back.
Yeah, no, I, we, I, we haven't went any farther with that because of this. Uh, that's just a, that number is just a matter of putting pencil to paper and cost of construction. But the, when we got to that process, when we got to that point is when the, this armory process came up and then I told them to move all of the plans there. But that's, in the event that this falls through, I don't know why it would, but in the event that it does, we can always go back and go to that, that, uh, plan, yeah. Mr. Mayfield?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, department heads in public, uh, Jerry Mayfield, Street Sanitation Superintendent. Um, we had one hundred and forty-six point four three tons residential. We had three hundred and seventeen point oh two tons commercial for a total of four hundred and sixty-three point four five tons trash this past month. Uh, we're doing our leaves and brush pickup and January is bulk pickup. So we're working on bulk pickup this month.
No antifreeze, no demolition?
No TVs, if we can have it, but.
Oh, I didn't know you couldn't put TVs out.
Air conditioners.
Air conditioner, I was gonna say, I put a TV out every, every month.
I'm sorry, I meant air conditioners. No, TVs we will pick up. I'm sorry.
Now you're gonna answer.
Like, if, if you built a deck or if you tore down a fence, we are not gonna pick it up. It's called demolition, so we're not picking up demolition. Yes, sir.
Now, we're having some snow day where we have a want, but I was just wondering, I think you already doing this. But I wanna check and make sure that if we do have any snow days where as people's not able or the city hall is closed. That you would extend it out a day, a couple of days in the February.
Well, the, the thing is, what we always do is, is, is every time we actually do bulk pickup, there's always somebody that waited to the last minute, didn't get their stuff out. So we do, we do have like a little grace period that we try to accommodate, you know, residents and everything. We do try to pick up.
I thought you did.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we do.
Just make, uh, make sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir. I didn't, I didn't wanna hit your heart.
Oh, you did, thank you. Appreciate that.
He been scared the whole time. Alright, you have the library report. Uh, Jessica was sick today, so, um, if you have any questions on that, just let me know. Next compliance, um, is on Mr. Watkins.
Good evening, Council. Uh, you should have a copy of my report, uh, for December. Building consultations, five. Permits written, zero. Building inspections, one. Plumbing inspections, zero. Mechanical, zero. Certificate completion, one. And courtesy notices issued, fifteen. Uh, talking about the bulky item, what we've pretty well always done is went about an extra week most of the time. And, uh, and usually do a ride through and Jerry and him usually do one, I do one as well, just to make sure everything's up. And we do that for a particular reason, because we always get that call. It's been there for a month and nobody picked it up, so, you know. In the eyes of two or three witnesses, we establish that, so that concludes my report.
We slum hearing out towards all state.
Yes.
So slum hearing people, I was just telling you that. Uh, Mr. Hill, um, Tourism Community Development.
Good evening, Council.
Evening.
Uh, you have my report there. Almost just put in bold print, Christmas, and left it at that. But I thought I would put in some thank yous, uh, to some people that definitely deserved it. Uh, King Griggs, Baltimore Main Street, we had a fantastic parade, uh, lots of, lots of participation. Um, and very well done from start to finish. People that, uh, I was at the end, uh, but everyone that was on my end was, um, very excited, uh, to see it come through. Mr. Gary Rogers and Hardeman County Four-H, uh, this year we teamed up with them to do an art contest. We wanted to provide something that, uh, the kids could participate in. And so all Hardeman County Four-H students had the opportunity to, uh, turn in a Christmas art piece, whether that be a craft or, uh, painting or whatever they wanted to do. And he judged each one of them at the classroom level and everyone who participated at the classroom level, uh, got a gift certificate to the Louise. Thanks to, uh, Mr. Brad Grantham and the Louise Theater. And then, uh, we had, uh, forty-nine entries, forty-nine classroom winners and five hundred and twenty-three people voted, uh, at the Festival of Trees. And we have our winner. Um, I do not know the exact name yet, 'cause Mr. Gary has the sheet. I just have, have a number of what they were. But we will be giving that student, uh, one hundred dollars. And then second and third place was so close, uh, I think it was a total of fifty-nine votes for num, for first place and then fifty votes for second and third tied. So I'm gonna do fifty dollars apiece for them. Um, but that was a great addition this year. Uh, the Carl Perkins Center continued with the Festival of Trees, uh, this year and the photos was Santa and they raised over seven thousand dollars. And that money stays right here in Hardeman County. And that's another great thing about this festival, is that we are able to, uh, team up with other entities to help people right here in Hardeman County raise money. Um, speaking of that, Ms. Andrea Young and the Hope House Volunteers and their efforts with the Holiday Mart, uh, they ran that all three weekends. And it was, uh, fantastic, actually. Um, last year, we had about half participation in the pop-up shops the second two weekends. This weekend, the last weekend was completely sold out and full, so we were excited about that. Uh, Mr. Richard Clark and Clark Engineering and Utility Solutions, uh, brought the magic of the snow each night for us, uh, at the Christmas parade. And then again, each night at the festival at, um, over by the skating rink. And so people really enjoyed that and we're excited to see that. And lots of Facebook pictures, if you notice a lot of Facebook pictures, it's gonna, you're gonna see the snow in it. They, that's one of their favorite parts. And again, as I've said, uh, time after time, our city employees, um, and the holiday staff that we hired and brought on for the festival. I can't say enough, I couldn't do it, um, without them. Those that are behind me here are department heads and the guys that work for them. And then the people that I pick up, uh, Mr. Raymond Rice and Ms. Ashley Ross and her crew that helped me at the actual festival. They take care of everything and it is just very well-run and very little, little headache in the big scheme of things. So thank you all for your support and we'll do it again in eleven short months, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Uh, Mr. Clark is back there waving his hand, uh, so I know you don't like recognition, but thank you. He puts a beautiful flow in every year and he brings snow, so you, you, I don't know if you brought this last snow or not, but he brings snow for us, so, thank you. And I, um, I did not say anything about any of the employees, 'cause they always fuss that I take the thumb to doing their reports and stuff. But I will reiterate, uh, just to go a little more in-depth, the stuff that we do as a city, we really couldn't do it without the employees. And guys down there at the light show is beautiful. If you didn't have a chance to go through it, you missed a great treat. Uh, every department, utility department putting together teacups, um, Jerry's guys, the street department, police, for all, fire, everybody, all hands on deck. And they make it work and they come and work extra hours, uh, to get it done, so I'm, in time, during Christmas time, this, Baltimore is always a pretty little town, something that we can be proud of, so. Uh, yeah, good job, Baltimore. And if anybody asks, unless y'all tell me, y'all, I, I got, I love, I told Jerry to leave the lights on downtown around the trees and the poles. They supposed to be where we can change colors on them things, so we're gonna try to do different colors, like breast council month, make them pink and all that. We'll see what happens. Hopefully they do it, if not, if they ain't the right color, sorry. But we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out, but, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was, uh, checking to see if we have anything from Def Coach.
They haven't met. I talked to Jerry last week to get a meeting scheduled, so probably next month, so they have a meeting and I have a report for you. Yeah, all, they did get the check, we got the check in and we usually note in October, I think. I, it was like eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, the normal.
Right.
And I will say that, that has paid off, so that, uh, that last deal there paid off that, that loan, so that's covered now. Um, but I, next meeting, I, we have, I have a report for you. Alright, uh, moving on to old business, public hearing on the annexation of the Watson Forum. This is a misprint. We forgot to, uh, put that on there, so if there's, well, hold on, first I need to get a motion to go into public hearing on the annexation of the Watson Forum. Was that Ms. Ray, Ms., no, motion by Ms. Ray, uh, there a second, second by Mr. Golden to go and leave executive session into public hearing. If there's anyone here that would like to address us, uh, annexing the Watson Forum. Alright, if not, is there a motion to reconvene into executive session? Motion by Mr. Woods, is there a second? Second by Mr. Williams, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Um, so what this is, we had, we passed the first reading of the resolution. Um, care about, do you remember that number? Um, I don't remember that number from last month, but that's the resolution we'll be voting on, on the annexation of the Watson Forum. Um, so is there any questions on that? Alright, if not, that you, was you trying to ask me a question?
No, I was just trying to find my paperwork.
Oh, okay, you were suffering over there a lot. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, approve annexation of, uh, the Watson Forum? Alright, there it is, Resolution twenty twenty-four zero ten, sorry. I have a motion by Ms. Ray, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Golden, if you would cast your votes.
See who got the bad one this time.
I was saying Mike Brown got it, didn't he?
Mike's got it.
Pointed at, pointed at Mick. It ain't never made it that far. I will, alright, I'll close it out, yeah. Motion carried, you gonna put you down as a year?
Yes.
Alright, motion carried, uh, move on to no other, no old business, move into a new business, approve a city, uh, voluntary council budget. Um, had a couple call about this. What we are doing, I wanted, and I've mentioned it to a lot of y'all, uh, previously, as a youth council and have some more and building our relationship with the schools, the high school, um, with all the school systems, but getting them, the youth more involved with what we're doing here at the council. I've asked, uh, the principal, Ms. Avent, to pick eight kids that's interested in government or interested in being a part, whether it be political science, whatever they wanna do this in the community. Um, she's working on that. I haven't got those names. Hopefully I have them by the month it's out. And what we will do is appoint them as a youth council. It won't be anything that, any, uh, things that they would have, that they would do anything. But what I would like to do is give them a fifty thousand dollar budget from our Economic Development Funds that they can do a project with. They can use it for matching monies to do something or whatever project they come up with. Now, this council will, of course, have to spend it. It will go through the same process, but just trying to get some youth. but just trying to get some youth involved in what we're doing here with the city, and I'll basically present that to them, we'll meet whatever days that work for them, let them come and watch you guys, what y'all do, sort of shadow what y'all, uh, do, and then whatever project that they come up with, let them present that to y'all, if it's within budget, and y'all approve it, and get that done, and they will serve on, uh, two-year terms, and then after they come off, have two more, I mean, have more kids to come in and serve in that role, so that's basically what this is, but it won't be anything on our charter, anything on our code, or anything like that, just a procedural thing that we'll have, that they can come and be a part of what we're doing with the council.
So that will be, um, that judge is sitting here?
Uh, yes, uh-uh, and I've, I've, I've had, I told her, I asked her to get a mixture of kids, cause we didn't, like, if, like, let's say now of all eight of them were seniors, they'll be gone, you know, two, three, so have a mixture of all, all the kids that's over there, um, to have a good mix of it.
Um, is there like, um, a specific program or grant or s- uh, not a grant, but you know, a program that she is modeling this off of, or?
Uh.
Just, y'all just got to come up with the concept of the whole process of.
Yeah, well, that's what we're doing, uh, what, what we're putting together, it's, I came to her to do it, so, what I would do, once they pick her group, their group, we will work with Southwest, USDA, and different people like that, to have them come in and talk to them about how government works and different projects that they can do, but we, you, this is the model, we don't, I'm not, uh, yeah, so we don't, I'm not copying it off of anybody else, so, if you have any ideas.
I'm not saying copying it, but I'm saying it seems like there may be some programs that are already kind of out there, uh, they, that you might be able to get some more, get an idea about really how to make it happen, how to organize it.
Well, it sounds like some we can work on, Carol, why? Cause I don't, I don't know, it might be, I'm not saying it's not.
That's what I'm saying, um, that way, I'm just, that's a, that's a question for, I guess, the meeting, whenever you decide to do that, I guess I would like to be involved in that.
I'll let you know when the meeting is, I love it, hey.
I appreciate it.
Any, uh.
Ray has experience.
Are we making sure that it's gonna be diversity?
Yes, sir, I did ask them to get a mixture of kids, uh-huh.
Thanks, Greg, yeah, I make the motion of diversity.
All right, have a motion by, is that, was there another question, was some, okay, motion by Mr. Williams, second, was that, who was that?
Golden.
Mr. Golden, uh, cash your votes.
Mike Brown, he know them high school kids, yeah, he didn't know.
All right. First, yeah, he was with, I'll turn to you, uh, thank y'all, Matt, I have a record draw too, um, next is resolution twenty twenty-five zero zero one, a resolution in support of comprehensive juvenile rehabilitation at detention center located in West Tennessee. Uh, what this resolution is, um, I'll, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but in a nutshell, a lot of the issues, crime-related, a lot of the crime-related issues that we're dealing with in our community, and not just our community, but all across West Tennessee and Tennessee and probably the country as a whole, is juvenile detention. Um, we've had a lot of, uh, violent crimes and things that have happened in our community, as well as others that, uh, what happens if they, if it's a kid under eighteen commits a shooting, or any type of violent crime, they, if we don't have anywhere to send them, they a lot of times released back to their parents, someone back at school the next day, um, without having somewhere for them to go, is, makes it very difficult for the, uh, police department to do their, uh, do their job as well as, uh, judges and all of that, so, this was brought to us, uh, the West Tennessee Mayor's Council, and acts, we're asking all of our councils to pass this resolution as a support that we can take to Nashville, to ask the legislator to, um, they, to build a deti- uh, detention center, or expand what we have at Wilder, we've talked about, maybe turning the prison in Mason over to a detention center, but somewhere where kids can, these juveniles that have committed violent crimes, can be housed until it's time for them to be sentenced, and they be taken off the street, um, and this has been a major problem, not to say, not just with small communities, and me and Chris was talking earlier, it's every city that you go to, and we've had, I know the last situation we had, we had to take them to, was it Dunlap? Somewhere in East Tennessee, it was.
North of Chattanooga.
Yeah, we had to take them there, and it took, uh, a while to find. Had to, yeah, so, take them down, and it's a challenge, and it's very difficult, and so this is something that all of our, all, a lot of other cities are passing, uh, just to ask the state, hey, help us out with this, and, um, hopefully they will hear the plea and the cry, and see from there, I've just talked to the mayor in, I think, Dyer County, Doesburg, they had to put a juvenile in a hotel with two deputies, cause he had committed murder and they didn't have anywhere for him to go, and they can't put him in the jail, so they literally had a hotel, they had him in, so, it's bad. But that's what this is, um, no money on anything attached to it, just a resolution to support, asking the legislators to do something to help.
I made the motion, we approve.
I, I have a.
Okay, I have a motion at a second, this, uh, Miller has a question.
I just have a question, I see that it says something about building, I guess, or this is the, already the prison in Mason that they're referring to?
Uh-huh.
With the capacity of six hundred.
Yes, they're, they closed that prison, I don't know why, uh, but yeah, but that's what that's referring to, just saying, A, there's a building available, maybe consider putting money into that. We talked to them about, me and Mike, we talked about timber springs a while ago, but just anywhere to put these kids on a central location. Was there any other questions? Okay, I have a motion, uh, by Mr. Golden as a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McKenna, who cash your votes.
Hold on, I kinda wanna have stay for this vote, is that the option?
Yeah, say the thing.
I'm gonna stay for this vote.
I think that's what that's, uh, that's see.
Does it work?
Yeah, it worked, I pushed it for you, all right. Yeah. We, uh, motion ca- mo- uh, motion carry.
Y'all should.
All right, uh. There's three buttons, yes, no, abstain, I'll give you another train of nickel, man.
It doesn't say that on anything.
Put your glass on, Caroline, yes, no, ABS, casual abstain.
I didn't see my glasses.
All right, next is, uh, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five zero zero one, uh, reading, um, sorry, ordinance to amend the zoning map to rezone property at two oh three Union Street from R one to B one, uh, this is the corner lot, uh, right behind K O C on the corner of Union and Jackson, the property owner there, uh, talked about, he came, Bear Polk property owner there is wanting to do a, put a food truck at that spot there, he owns that property, has cleaned it up quite a bit, um, but that's what this is, a planning commission, uh, gave a positive recommendation for it, and we would have to pass it as well to rezone it.
Well, it is, it's not a, a new food truck thing, right, like, not even a.
Yes, next block over, uh, but that, like, he came, he owns that property, that other property is owned by someone else, um, and they, they, they pay, or they charge people to set up there, so, you know, he owns that lot, so, instead of him paying somebody else to go set up, he wanna set up on his own property, that's, so that's basically.
But what is the consideration of, of doing, you know, it's next to, it does by living in a house, it's.
There, uh, it's, they live in the one behind it, yes, uh-huh.
It's offensive between.
It's a, yes, a fence between the two, um, the, from what we discussed at the planning commission, it's commercial property around it, it is on a, on, it's not the main hallway, but it's on a business highway, uh, um, and there's other, it's residential, but it will be, uh, be one, which is neighborhood business, um, you still can have a, you can have a house in a neighborhood business, and you can have a business in, in neighborhood business, that's what B one is defined.
Expense of the city.
Expense of the city, uh, money-wise, none, uh, it'll just be us rezoning, it's no money to us, uh, we would just be rezoning that piece of property there.
I make a motion, we approve, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash Z one zero one.
Second. Motion by, uh, Mr. McKenna, second by, uh, sorry, Mr. Brown, it's hard for me to say, but I used to call, second by Mr. Brown, uh, would cash your votes. All right, motion carry. Next, I have a reading, it's, uh, twenty twenty-five zero zero two, uh, to amend ordinance twenty-three zero zero one relative to City of Auburn municipal code title twelve. Uh, what this basically is in a nutshell, the building, and Mr. Watkins, make sure if I say this wrong, let me know, when we passed our building codes, we updated it to the twenty-twenty-one code, but the state is on twenty-eighteen, did I say that right? And we are not allowed to go over what the state has, so we were basically correcting our code to go from the twenty-twenty-one to add in the twenty, if you look at it where it says section two, twenty-eighteen international energy conservation code, we will be putting that part in this section here, uh, to, to match the state law, is what this basically is, it goes down to codes. That, I did say that right now. Anybody got any questions on that? All right, ordinance, I mean, I have a math.
Twenty twenty-five dash Z one zero two.
I have a motion by Mr. McKenna, to approve, a second by Mr. Woods, any questions, or if not, cash your votes. I don't know why you keep putting them on and taking them off. Mo- motion, uh, motion carries the same people out there, nobody came in, next is, uh, reading of ordinance, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five zero zero three, in order to allow for partial payments of real property, uh, taxes, basically what that is, what this is right now, the law requires that you pay your property taxes in full, and they have to be paid in full by the last day of February, we don't allow for easy math, so, uh, my math teacher won't get on me. If we, if you owe twelve hundred dollars, you, right now's the way to set up, you can't pay a hundred dollars a month, you have to come in and pay that twelve hundred dollars at one time. What I would like for us to do is make it where you can make partial payments, fifty dollars, no less than fifty dollars, if you have people, I hope this, I think this will be a help to people that's on fixed income, uh, that's, you know, it's a lot easier to come up with a hundred dollars a month opposed to having to pay all at one time, but it has to be paid in full, just like normal, by February, uh, the last day of the month, so what we would do, this would allow them to make those partial payments.
I make a motion, they will approve that.
All right, I have a motion, uh, second by Mr. McKenna, is there, uh, Chris, did you have a question?
Just for curiosity, how do we do, like, the utility deals and stuff, totally separate, but like, do we require them to pay it all, all the full, or do we allow partial payment?
I think they can pay partially, uh, if you want to, but you gotta have it paid before the cutoff, that, but, um.
I, I was just curious.
I think I'll have to ask, Jim, do you know, can you make a partial payment on your utility bill, I'm, I think you can.
Uh, well, it just depends on circumstances, like, you know, the single digits, but normally it's, uh, it's paid for.
I was, I was just curious.
Is that, is that something that the, uh, board would have to approve to, uh, do partial payment, and the city council do that?
When you say board, you, man, you talking about the utility thing? Uh, the uti- I'll, I'll check and see, I'll ask that question, I don't know. I.
If not, that's a good idea.
I think you can, the reason I'm, I'm saying, cause I paid, I didn't pay my full bill one time, and I had to pay the rest before you cut off. Yeah, so, but it wasn't in the potential partial payment, I just didn't have the right amount, so, uh, I think the answer to your question is, yeah, they're partial, but it wasn't a payment plan, you better have it all paid before, before the cutoff day, I know that. So, uh, is there any other question? We do have to send this to the, uh, state for the controller to approve it, and I think our system is already set up to do it, if not, we'll have to do some stuff in there on our system, but this gonna take some more things that we have to pass, but this is the first step. All right, I have a motion by Mr. McKenna, and a second was Mr. Williams, I think.
No, I.
I'm sorry, Mr. Golden, my, motion by Mr. McKenna, a second by Mr. Golden, if you would, can, did I say that wrong?
It don't matter.
Uh. I'm sorry. Motion carry, all right, don't forget slum hearing, just stay seated, don't move, Larry, Susan, and Chris, don't, don't talk it. Uh, we got the thing, all right, is that motion to a juror?
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. McKenna? All right, motion, uh, motion carry.